The planning board to order at seven o'clock on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
And I am in the zoning board meeting, the joint planning and zoning meeting, November sixteenth, seven o'clock.
Sounds good. We haven't screwed that up yet.
Yeah, we know what day it is and who we are. Thank you.
Okay, first item on the agenda we can all agree to, the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment of items that are not on the agenda tonight? I'm not seeing any. We move forward to the next item is minutes. We will deal with the minutes for the planning board first, and then Cindy will do the ZBA minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, planning board members, you have the minutes from ten eighteen twenty-two in your packet. And also, I think they were sent to you ahead of time. Does anybody have any additions, subtractions, corrections, or comments on the minutes? Yeah, take a quick look if you like. If somebody at some point is ready to make a motion to accept the minutes as printed, unless they have a correction, please do so. Any comments or a motion to accept as printed?
I'll make a motion to accept as printed.
Okay, we have a motion from Amanda. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, second by Mr. Gould. Okay, again, one more question. Any additions, subtractions, corrections? If not, I will call a vote. All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, and the chair votes aye. Any noes? Not seeing any. They are accepted unanimously. Okay, all yours, Cindy.
My turn. It's, we're here to accept the October nineteenth minutes of the zoning board this evening as printed in our packet. Could I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as printed?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll pass this down for signing.
Okay, very good. Next item we go to, we have the public hearing for McDonald's, but I don't think it's quite time yet, if I'm not mistaken.
It is not quite time.
Was it advertised for seven-ten?
Seven-ten, yes.
Okay, very good. We have five minutes here to kill. At the board's pleasure, would they like to take up the A and R at four eighteen River Street to fill in the five minutes?
In a motion?
Do I have a motion to move the agenda item? Garrett has a motion to move the agenda item. Do I have a second? Mr. Gould. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so we will take up the A and R for, that is, what is it, four eighteen?
Four eighteen Main, eleven River.
River, four eighteen River is the A and R.
And we have-
You have the A and R in your packet. And please introduce yourselves, and any comments you'd like to make.
I'll introduce myself. Randy, Randall Hot, the owner of four eighteen River Street and eleven Main.
Okay, very good. And the other gentleman?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Philip Posner. I'm the applicant's attorney.
Okay, very good. And will this other gentleman be speaking?
May if you have some questions.
Mr. Montero, do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, he's not part of your-
My name is Paul Montero. I'm a land surveyor.
Are you part of the team on this, or are you a?
Oh, yeah.
He's part, you're part of the team?
Yes, he is.
I'm the surveyor.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Please let us know what you're up to here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, the proposal in front of the planning board is to endorse a Form A plan. The idea is to move the lot line, the present lot line, ten feet from its present location. That will permit a fire escape, sufficient room to be installed on the rear of the eleven dash fifteen Main Street building. The bigger picture as well is that we're making a request of the zoning board, and I don't know if you want me to make-
No, we're just dealing with the A and R right now.
But very briefly, this property has two pre-existing non-conforming buildings. These buildings are over a hundred and forty years old. They haven't moved, of course. And the idea behind moving the lot line, as I said, is to permit a fire escape to be installed on the Main Street building. At present, the Main Street building is located two feet from the boundary line, which is not sufficient room to install any fire escape at all. And after consultation with the land surveyor and the building inspector, twelve feet was deemed to be sufficient amount of room to install the fire escape.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the information. Do I have any questions from our board members or from the ZBA board members who allow you to ask questions on this, have any at this, just in regards to the A and R?
Okay, nothing yet.
Okay, any board members? It looks pretty straightforward. You know, we've dealt with these, just a boundary movement. If nobody has any questions or subtractions, I will entertain a motion to endorse the A and R, if that's the correct term?
Yes.
Aye, so move.
Okay, move by Mr. Gould. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Armenta. Okay, any questions? If not, I'll call the vote. Sorry, brainlock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so you have your A and R.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
Afterwards. Good luck.
Thank you.
Very good.
Would you like me to proceed to make a quick presentation on the zoning board?
We cannot yet because it's not seven fifteen and you're on our agenda for seven fifteen. So if we've got a minute, we're going to have to flip back to McDonald's. I'm sorry. We're going to change, change partners.
Yeah, A and R is not time-sensitive, so.
Okay. So I will mention, Madam Chairman, I think the application's fairly straightforward as well, so, you know, hopefully we can get through that relatively quickly.
Thank you. I'm sorry about the technical difficulties.
You'll have to hang out and listen to McDonald's.
Okay.
Yep. Are they serving?
Oh, I don't know.
I thought they might bring some samples.
Yeah, I know. We should have.
Okay, very good. So we got that. We got actually less than a minute, but if you would like to come out to McDonald's and I will read the notice in a moment. Well, actually, it is seven-ten now. So let me put these over here.
Lots of place.
Yeah, spread them out.
You can set up right in front. Do you have any objections to him setting up so the board can see? He can face the board, or would you like him to set up in a different spot?
Kind of an angle.
Yeah. You can set up over here.
There's nobody behind you right there, so.
Yeah, that-
You can always get up and move.
Okay, very good. In the meantime, I will read the public hearing notice. Okay, very good. Notice is hereby given that the Winchunin Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a joint public hearing on Wednesday, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven-ten p.m. to consider the request to modify the site plan, actually, variance and special permit issued to McDonald's USA LLC of one-ten North Carpenter Street, Chicago, Illinois, six-zero-six-zero-seven for property located at two-thirty-five Spring Street, Winchunin, Mass., oh-one-four-seven-five. Identifies as Winchunin's Assessor Map, five-C-three, parcel ninety-six, owned by Joseph Rishudo, care of Joseph Spada, eight Lake Street, Post Office Box nine-oh-two Spencer, Mass., oh-one-five-six-two. Modification seeks to include a reconfiguration of the existing single lane order point drive-through with dual-point configuration of two lanes and two order points. Said property is located in the PD Plan Development District. The hearing will be held in the second floor auditorium of the Winchunin Town Hall, one-oh-nine Front Street. Information is available in the Winchunin Planning and Development Office. All interested persons should plan to attend. Alternative translations and accommodations are available by advance request by contacting the Planning and Development Department at least three days in advance. And with the reading of that, I call the, the planning board, public hearing open.
We've read the notice of, the public hearing notice. I would just like to make note that as I take a vote to open the zoning board meeting, we are a member of four and we require a supermajority vote, so our fifth member was unable to attend tonight. So if you have any objections to the fact that we're limited to four, please say so now and we could continue our part. We can move.
Yep, no objection.
Okay. Then I, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, go right ahead. You finish yours.
Then I hereby call the zoning board, take a motion to open the hearing for the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open the hearing. Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I go back to what I forgot to do.
Okay, and then I have to have to ask if there's anyone that has a conflict of interest in hearing this case?
I do not.
Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Garrett, second?
Second.
Second by Art, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the hearing is open. Sorry about that.
Good. You go first.
Well, you want to make your, does anybody have a conflict of interest?
I did say that.
Okay, does anybody on that board have a conflict of interest? Not including eating McDonald's hamburgers, but, okay, very good. Okay, please introduce yourself. Actually, I'm not sure if I need to swear you, but would you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, very good. Just better be safe than sorry.
And that counts for both of us.
Yes.
My name is Dan Allen. I work with Bowler Engineering, where there's a civil engineer on the project and here tonight representing McDonald's as the applicant. First, just wanted to hand out some of my seventeen's, just kind of talk of these discussions.
Just for note, anything you say will need to be said in front of the microphone so they can catch it.
Yeah, there's plans that I just passed out. They just show the proposed site work with the demolition work in red, just to kind of better illustrate the changes on site. But the, so the proposed project is at two-thirty-five Spring Street. It's the existing McDonald's restaurant. We're here tonight requesting an amendment to the existing special permit as well as a planning board site plan approval. Just to run you guys through the existing site here today, two-thirty-five Spring Street. It's about, they have a three, thirty-one hundred square foot existing McDonald's restaurant with a single-order drive-through. The single-order only has one order point, one lane, and then they have two drive-through windows. The first window is the cash window where they make the payment at, and the second window is where they pick up their food. As you can see, they have a total of three existing driveways. They have an enter-only from Spring Street and then an exit-only as well, a left and a right-hand turn out. The third driveway goes to Cross Street, kind of the right side of the page there, and that's just an exit-only. So McDonald, what McDonald's is proposing to do. Did you say I have to speak into the mic, Brett?
Preferable.
Preferable. So what McDonald's is proposing to do is add a second order point and kind of a second lane. It's really just to, with the intent to improve their existing drive-through operations that exist out there today. The intention really with the dual order points is to improve the efficiency of the drive-through with, to provide increased stacking as well as reduce customer wait times. If you think about it with like the single order point, say you have the car full of soccer team coming in and they need to make like six orders there, it's going to hold up traffic which can, or stacking which will back up. The second order point kind of allows, say that van comes in and is making that order, allows drive-through operations to continue in that second lane. So if somebody pulls up, they see the cars taking a while, they can pull around and go to the second order point. So drive-through operations kind of continue moving, just really helps with the traffic flow through the site. To kind of accommodate this layout, they're going to be reducing parking by about seven parking spaces, where they have, I think, about forty-seven existing or forty-six existing. They'll be going down to thirty-nine proposed. This is outside of parking requirements, which ITE regulations require, I think it's within ten percent of ITE regulations, where they need to have a minimum of twenty-one spaces and a maximum of twenty-seven. The thirty-nine proposed spaces is sufficient for McDonald's operations, which they would like to keep out there. Additionally, just with, as a result of the proposed work, impervious coverage is going to be reduced by about two hundred square feet. So we've requested a waiver from providing a stormwater report for that reason with the reduction in impervious coverage. It shouldn't impact the existing stormwater on site, and no real changes to the system are proposed. Yeah, so I mean, as far as the second order point, so each order point will have a primary menu board, and then there's also a secondary pre-browse board, which is located just ahead of the order point, which allows customers kind of browse menu board items ahead of getting to the order point, so they're a little more ready. And that's currently what's existing out there today. There's just the single order point with the pre-browse and menu board. So those digital boards will just be relocated slightly, and then two new boards, and the order point will be proposed in that second lane. I think, I think that's really generally what McDonald's is looking to do out here, just really improve their existing drive-through operations on site. So happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Well, probably the first question I have is regards to the, I noticed that you had pickup, added pickup on the west side of the building where there was parking spaces?
Uh, yep, correct.
And looking at the handicap spots, the line seems to more than often block those handicap spots from people being, accessing them. Have you ever, have you considered moving those handicap spots down to where your mobile order pickup is?
Yes.
And then putting the mobile order pickup either there or keep it where it is?
So with potentially reload, so the proposed second lane improved stacking by about five spaces. So those, like, five cars that might be, that would be lined up behind the ADA and further back would now be ahead of them and kind of reducing the impact of stacking. If we were to slide those spaces down, I believe the grades kind of within the mobile, proposed mobile order pickup spaces are non-compliant, so that would, it'd be required additional like pavement work and regrading kind of up through like the driveway to get compliant ADA slopes, and then to provide a ramp up there to the entrance. It's pretty tight, so I think we'd probably have to pick up pavement like six inches or more on that. So it'd just be a lot of additional work to see if it's really like feasible grade-wise, but just initially looking at it, it wouldn't be compliant.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I don't have any questions. Do you, Cindy, before I go to the board, or is it your chair, too?
So any of my board's members have a question?
My biggest concern out of all this is the left-hand turns coming out of there, clogging, clogging the road. I mean, it does it right now when people are leaving from, from getting takeout. So I don't, I don't know what the solution is to that, but I just know that that road's usually pretty packed at certain times of the day anyway. And, and that left-hand turn out of there really slows things down. Because they got to sit and wait, and then the cars, like you say, stack up all the way out into the road for people trying to get into McDonald's. So if you look at the exit after the, after the takeout.
Yep.
There's an option to go left and to go right.
Yep.
Going right's no issue, but going left, it stops all that traffic coming up Spring Street right there.
Gotcha.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So that all the people that, when they're waiting and there's cars going by, nobody's leaving that parking lot, which means that stacks up the cars too. And I know that second lane will help that, but I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to kind of alleviate some of that pain there.
No, I think, I know McDonald's, they prefer to kind of keep the egress there. I'm not really, yeah, sure if like they'd be okay restricting that to a right turner only or, or, yeah, so people looking to take a left turn, I guess, would technically need to, if that was restricted, would need to recirculate to the front of the building and then exit out onto Cross Street potentially. But I know that having all those vehicles who want to take a left-hand turn and kind of recirculate to that area on the west side of the building, I think with the drive-through kind of queuing there and the parking space is going to create a lot of like additional kind of traffic and congestion on that side. So that's kind of my initial thought based on that.
I got it.
And if I-
Board members, anybody have comments, questions before we start? After that, we'll go over Jean Christie's comments from Ty and Bond. Mr. Gould?
Good set of plans. Boy, you engineers hate to put elevations on there though and so forth, because when that specific building was built, there was a couple of drainage problems. I guess they still are. But I have a concern. Spring Street is a two-lane road. It's a marked route. Extra business means extra cars. Now, when they're, even now, without the second window, you've got cars that are packed out on Spring Street, and they are packed out on Spring Street. I am surprised that there's no comment from the police department here.
Well, if I may, Mr. Gould?
I beg your pardon?
Chief, Chief Walski did come in my office this afternoon, and he did send me an email. And it says, "I feel it is important to note that it is impossible for me to provide a fully educated comment on this. However, I also understand the request for my input, to some extent, is derived merely as a matter of courtesy." He says, "With that said, after looking at the plans briefly, I do not foresee any issues with this project." Signed, Chief Walski.
Well, the chief hasn't gone down there when the place is busy. I went down there on Sunday and there were cars packed on Spring Street. All the selectmen have to do is put a no-packing sign up there, and I think your plans go right out the window. That's a marked route, and I'm not sure if you legally can pack out there.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I mean, the intent of the site is to provide parking on-site for the customers?
What I'm simply saying is, it's a busy place, and I'm glad somebody is trying to make a dollar with it. But the gas station across the street is a darn busy place, and there have been some mishaps down there. We won't call them accidents. We'll call them mishaps, more than one, coming out and going in. If you put another window there, you're going to add a lot more traffic going in there. And likewise, if it's a takeout window, you're going to wait for your order to be put up. So there's going to be some traffic problems down there. So what are you people going to do about that?
So the intent, I think, of the second order point isn't really anticipated to be a generator of traffic. It's really just to kind of better manage the existing traffic coming to the site. So like, we provide like stacking, and I think existing today up until like those ADA stalls, you have about nine people who can be in that queue. Based on the proposed layout, you're getting additional five cars up to that point.
Yeah, but with two windows, you're going to have twice as much traffic, twice as many cars. What I'm simply, what I'm simply saying is having packing out, put your other, put your other photograph up there. Okay, everybody take a look. You can see Spring Street and cars pack out there. You've all seen them. I know damn well you have. They were out there Sunday. What are you going to do when winter comes? It's a busy place. The gas station across the street is open all kinds of hours, and so is McDonald's. So, you know, if, if there's a complaint or a serious accident, all the selectmen have got to do is spend fifty bucks and put up no-packing on that side, and that's going to screw things up.
Whatever. Are there no-parking signs there now, do you know?
I don't believe there are, no.
Not to my knowledge.
There aren't any no-parking signs out there, but I think if you check Massachusetts law, a marked route, that is Route twelve, that you can't pack out there, and you don't see too many people packing out there. And it's, it's a very busy street, a lot of houses up there, and so on and so forth. That's my concern, public safety.
Understood.
The reference to being parked out there is waiting to be, to be able to go into McDonald's to access the drive-through. Correct?
I'm not convinced. I'm just not, you need to go down there and take a look at the car when it's busy now. Not with this new facility out now, and there are cars that pack out on Spring Street, especially early in coffee time in the morning or at lunchtime.
See, just to clarify, you're talking about customers parked out there?
Yeah, McDonald's customers.
Right.
Like waiting, waiting to get into the drive-thru?
Yeah, exactly. Waiting to get in.
So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that what you're suggesting is that you're going to eliminate some of that by opening another lane, literally doubling the amount the parking lot holds. That doesn't mean there's not going to be more people getting in line now because there's more space to get in line. So, you know, you won't know until that, that happens.
But on the same hand, there's only a certain capacity that the kitchen can cook and a certain capacity of, they're not adding to the facility, to the cooking. They're just adding an ordering window.
Well, Madam Chairman, I agree with you up to a point, but you're going to have more cars. You know, there's still only one way in, unless you come in from Cross Street, and you really can't do that too well either, because that's very narrow entrance to go out.
The information in front of us right now leads me to believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that I see a little red car on, on Spring Street from, in the distance. It looks like there'd be about room for six cars in line on Spring Street, ready to go in. If you add that extra lane, those six that would be waiting out there would potentially be inside the lot. Is that?
Correct.
That's, I mean, I'm just guestimating the amount of, of cars.
My name is Jean Christie. I'm a senior engineer at Ty &amp; Bond. I asked this exact question to a traffic engineer at our firm, wanting to know if adding another ordering point increases, isn't expected to increase, the number of vehicle trips coming in. And the Institute for Transportation Engineer, their traffic or trip generation manual at this point does not distinguish between a single drive-through or multiple drive-throughs. So they're saying it's limiting-
So they're saying it's limited by the kitchen, I think, is exactly right. So yes, it's, the intent is to get people into the ordering queue, but they're still gonna, you know, be able to operate the same way with the kitchen. If that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Gene. Question. As I remember, there was no parking signs there. Have they been taken down, or do you, do you know Garrett whether that was-
I'm not sure. I don't recall seeing them when I drove by.
Well, we'll come from public comment after we go through all this. We will call for public comment. Okay.
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay, very good. Do you want to go on, Mr. Gould, or?
Thank you.
So in regards to, I'm gonna start first with what's currently in front of me. So with the double drive-through that you have coming in here, what is to prevent a double line being formed from the roadway all the way up to both queues? Because at multiple McDonald's, it's a constant problem where not just a single line is coming down, but both order queue points are filled all the way down to the road.
So the kind of intent and design of this is to have that like one single lane, just like running up to like where it begins at the entrance, and then just to have the cars split there. So the intention is to have that only be a single stacking back.
So if it's a single stacking back, I'm gonna piggyback on Bert's, I believe it was Bert's question about, or maybe it was Guy's, in regards to the comment of now you're blocking both handicap accessible parking spots, because now you have the lane for the travel going closest to the building, correct?
Correct. So that's how it exists out there today as well.
Okay. So what is the thought in changing the drive-through so that the entrance of the drive-through comes in from Cross Street and alleviates all the traffic and blocking the entire parking lot that is currently there now? The ADA, handicap accessible parking spots there, having that entrance come in for the inside customers and leaving for the inside customers, and having the drive-through enter through Cross Street, therefore eliminating or alleviating, for the best part, the amount of traffic backup and issues that are going to be caused for having that extra spot there now? Because you are going to have more people coming to the drive-through.
Gotcha. So what you're more or less saying is to have, thinking of, if they were able to have traffic entering from that like Cross Street driveway?
So if they were turning into the Cross Street driveway and turning left into the McDonald's parking lot.
Yep.
And having the double drive-through coming in through there.
Gotcha.
A single lane, so you have a bypass lane on the right-hand side to go around to your mobile pickup or whatever you doing in that area. And then coming into a double lane drive-through. And then that parking lot being blocked off, so that you have to come in the parking lot, you can access the inside of the McDonald's from that parking lot, the current parking lot there. But then the remainder of the traffic that's going for the drive-through mobile pickup is coming in through Cross Street and around the backside, therefore not blocking any of the parking spots, causing any ADA violations or any issues in that respect, and therefore trying to alleviate the traffic that's gonna be backed up on Spring Street.
Understood. So the kind of parking lot, kind of as you enter the site, there would more or less be cut off from like being able to recirculate the building was-
Be, there'd be inside customers coming into that parking lot.
Gotcha. So for them to get out, however, I think they would need to cross that drive-through lane technically. So it kind of like, having that intersection isn't ideal, it's not something McDonald's really likes to do on their sites at all, or really proposes that. Really don't see that too often, or much ever. But I do understand your point there.
It's just, you know, the traffic nightmare is the issue. Again, I agree that you're gonna be bringing more cars in to alleviate some spots by adding that, but the concern is, is, you know, now you're gonna be having much more customers coming in, and you're gonna have more issue of traffic backup in regards to that respect.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, as you can see kind of on the aerial there, you have that, that white car that's like the third car in line pretty much from the order point that's impacting it with like the new layout. I think that's close, closer gonna be like the seventh car at that point, so those five additional, or whenever there's five more cars there with this proposed layout, it won't be blocking the ADA stalls, where under the current conditions today, it would be. So really, the kind of intent of this new layout is really just to improve the stacking and drive-through like operations for that reason. And this typical layout with kind of the side-by-side on like the top right-hand corner of the building is the McDonald's like type A, like proto layout. If they were to rebuild the site, this was, would be, or that kind of drive-through configuration would be what they would propose there.
So coming off of the same Spring Street entrance?
I'm not sure, not specifically for like this site, just like in general, if they're gonna do a full raise and rebuild, in that case, they would still propose kind of the single lane to two lanes to one, kind of on the top right-hand corner of the building. But with this current property, they're not looking to do a full raise and rebuild of the entire site.
So if I could, if it's gonna go single lane to double lane, how many cars are you ultimately pulling off the street then?
Five.
So five cars can be in that little section where the double lane is? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it'll provide five additional vehicles.
Okay.
So Rob, if you want to take a look at the screen, there's your five cars right up there.
Yeah, there's the stacking exhibit as well.
So they start right at the curve here, and then they go back.
Okay, yeah, mine doesn't have the cars on it. My picture here, I got it there. Okay.
And just to clarify also, the current spaces in the rear of the building would be eliminated?
Yes, there's seven of them. Yep, seven of them.
And that would be to alleviate-
The curve.
To, for public access, public safety access?
Yep, for fire truck vehicles turning around the rear of the site, yeah, it's really to accommodate, make sure there's enough clearance for fire truck and loading vehicles.
And to the fire department, Deputy Vane did have no issue with this project, and he found that, he didn't express any concerns, and he found with the proposed changes affecting any fire access or emergency response.
Okay, very good. Do we have any more questions at the moment? If not, we'll go over Ty &amp; Bond's comments, and then we'll go back to questions, and there will be question and answer during Ty &amp; Bond comments. And then we'll have public comments, so you don't get left out, feel you're gonna get left out.
I know we gotta make any decisions, but we do have a little frustrated.
Okay, very good. I, okay, we, after we go over these, if questions aren't answered, then we'll be able answering them. Okay, very good. Now we're gonna go to Ty &amp; Bond's comments, unless anybody wants to make a comment before we do that.
I have a question.
Sure.
You're gonna put all this, the vehicles are gonna be inside doing the pickups, but they're all gonna have to come out one exit. What's the impact on the street for that?
There's no change in the kind of traffic flow or generation coming into or out of the site.
You're gonna have more vehicles trying to come out of there with now saying that you can park cars in front waiting to go in, and this is a heavily traveled road. It's a very active road, so you've got multiple people going in, people coming out in a very tight area. I'm not sure how that's gonna work, and you're not gonna have a problem with safety. You also have the garage, which is across the street, and you have a very large residential complex right next, almost right in front of the exit, where the cars would be coming out. There's gonna be impact in there. How are you gonna accommodate that?
I think that they're not gonna make more food faster, so even though there's, there could be more cars stacked all the way up, but they can, correct me if I'm wrong, still only output whatever they can output. So the car coming out should be the same, it's just that they would be holding more inside the parking lot. That's my understanding. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the, I mean, and it kind of allows traffic to continue flowing. Like I mentioned before, you have that one large order that's at the order point, say like it's a car full of kids after soccer practice or something. With the single order, that's gonna back up like traffic. People aren't gonna be able to continue making orders, the kitchen isn't gonna be able to process orders. With that second order point, that traffic's backed up in that prime, or one of those points, it allows vehicles and customers to continue making orders while that other order is, bigger order is still being made. So the kitchen is able to continue processing orders, and just kind of really helps with the drive-through traffic flow.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, as I understand it, it's more about the flow rather than the volume of traffic coming in. It's, the ultimate volume of traffic is more or less limited by the capacity of the kitchen and the, and the food versus the, they're not gonna be making more food because they can't, it's the same kitchen.
Right.
It's the same window, it's the same person taking the payment. It's not adding a double payment or a double dispensing the food thing, it's just helping to keep the traffic flowing through the property more reasonably.
Okay, and then we'll go to Ty &amp; Bond, and this will, we'll have more questions, because they're kind of revisiting some of the things we already covered. The first comment from Ty &amp; Bond is regards to the parking spaces. These have been, as he stated, and the comment has been addressed, as far as Ty &amp; Bond is concerned, there is enough parking spaces left. So we will go over that. Item two is the Winchton and Fire Department has concerns regarding emergency vehicle accessibility. Actually, they've gone back and forth in comments, and the chief, fire chief has looked at this, and he approves of the plan they put forward, so that comment has been addressed as far as Ty &amp; Bond is concerned, that the fire truck is, I'll put it this way, the provided fire truck turn exhibit presents graphical representation of the anticipated fire truck travel path, indicating that the apparatus can maneuver through the site. So this comment has been addressed. And then we go to comment number third, number three, which is, "We recommend the applicant confirm the vehicle queuing does not block the fire department connection to the building." Then I'll go back to Ty &amp; Bond's response. "We recommend that the Winchton and Fire Department," I think there's a misspelling on this word, O-P-I-N-E.
Opine.
Opine, okay.
Provide opinion.
What's that?
It's just to provide opinion. But I think that one's all set.
Opine on access to the fire department connection in the event of an emergency.
But I think if, if the chief has already stated that he had no problems, he would have considered this.
Okay, very good. We go on to comment four. "We recommend the applicant demonstrate that the drive-through layout provides enough space for pre-ordering queuing, and that the only accessible parking spaces are not blocked by the pre-ordering queue. A potential solution could move the accessible parking spaces further north." Board's response, "The proposed drive-through improvements will provide an additional stacking capacity, five stalls." We already went over this, then I go to Ty &amp; Bond. "We defer to, determine, we've, we defer to the board to determine if additional modifications or studies are warranted for potential stacking impacts to accessibility parking stalls." So she is bringing it back on the board, this is a discussion we had, and we will continue that discussion before the end of the evening. Then we go to regarding, item five, regarding general circulation. Or actually, do you want to speak to this one? Number four.
One we just talked about, number four. Yeah, so, you know, we did just talk about this very briefly. The applicant's response that moving those parking spaces would require additional site work, curbing, pavement, grading. That's probably not a deal killer in the whole scheme of a project like this. So if that is the, what the board determines to be the safest thing to do, I can't imagine that McDonald's would walk away from adding another drive-through. The challenge will be then on them to figure out where these mobile order locations should be, because they would swap, but they can't really swap. So that would be just another kind of wrench in that one.
Okay, very good. Do you agree with him, or do you see with him that the grading at that point-
See both points. It's more work, it's more money, it's not a fast fix. Like adding this other infrastructure in might be quick and easy to do and some downtime, but I think that those parking spaces should be moved.
Okay, very good. Then we'll go on to five. We will have more discussion on that. Regarding general circulation, the exit onto Spring Street is directly across from existing driveway, driveways across Spring Street. We understand that the, currently, the exiting onto Spring Street at this location can be challenging. We recommend the applicant consider making the exit onto Spring Street be a right turn only with the traffic requiring a left turn maneuvering around the site to exit on Cross Street to avoid existing conflicts with the existing gas station. McDonald's response, "McDonald's would prefer to maintain the existing exit driveway, allowing for a left or right turn as directing vehicles." Ty &amp; Bond, "We defer to the board to determine if additional modifications or studies are warranted for vehicle maneuvering." So does, we have any comments on that before I go on to the next one? Or do we want to discuss that at the end? I think we've discussed a bit already.
We did.
But how we deal with it. Okay, Gene, do you have any comments in regards to that other than what you put here?
The only thing I could add to that would be that we don't have the data that supports, or just don't have data on who's turning, how many are turning right, how many are turning left at this point. You know, I don't know if that was in an early traffic study way back when, that we could extrapolate from, but knowing that left-hand turn, and then to your point about how those coming out of the drive-through lane may conflict with that, you know, the board may want to consider-
Do you think a traffic study would be warranted?
The challenge with that is that the total volume of trips isn't going to change, or not expected to change in that. So it's, if there's an existing problem, yes, we should fix the existing problem, but I don't think a whole traffic study is needed. I think it would be a, like a number, like let's figure out pieces of it, we don't need the whole traffic study.
Could I suggest something? And I don't know that it'll solve it, but it might help, it might help us understand it, is if you, there's gonna be cameras there at McDonald's, you watch footage of, you know, peak hours, when, you know, when, at five o'clock maybe, when people are trying to eat dinner, but also get out of work, and see what that looks like. I mean, you're not gonna get a statistical number, but you can see it or drive it and experience it, you know, I think that'll be the truest thing you're gonna get for information, so.
What do you see, taking Rob's suggestion, not a traffic study, but is there something else they can do from what you understand?
I'm sure there is, I can't think of it off the top of my head. It's going to be a, that volume of left, people turning left in that peak hour, you know, it's not all times of day, it's that peak hour or two hours in the evening, or coffee time, or what have you. I think it should be looked at, and I don't know if there is any mitigation for that left turn, however, because of the volume on Spring Street. If the challenge with, and I guess it's a geometry thing too, if that, that location and that left turn is challenged by what's across the street, then, you know, it's one of those things where you're blaming, you're having McDonald's fix the problem that's created by two entities. So it's, I'm a little stuck there.
So I would just say that my view of it is that regardless of the building across the street, that left turn is impossible to get out of during peak hours, so. And I would just say, you know, if you can, get the footage, and maybe you see that they don't, the car isn't sitting there that long, and it's not that big of a deal, and just maybe some of us have just experienced it at its worst moment, and you know what I mean, and maybe it's, maybe it's not that. But I don't know that the building across the street has anything to do with the left turn out of there, it's the volume of traffic coming up Spring Street, so.
But in a way, I kind of beg to differ, because if you're coming out of the gas station across the street, making a left turn when somebody from McDonald's is making a left turn.
Ah, okay.
It really is a compound, I-
Sure.
Trust me, I've done that.
Yeah, I've been there too.
It's not pretty.
I never hit the gas station, so I don't know that one there, so.
But I guess-
And throw in a school bus stop for the condos and the houses there, and it is just- just, it's a problem on that part of the road, period.
But then there's there's another converse argument to this, because if we eliminated that left turn out of the site and we required folks to go around the site and exit onto Cross Street, we're just moving a problem down to Cross Street in left turns, and then we're impacting neighborhood at that point. Um so.
And probably the neighborhood that go up to the Glen Allen Street and pull a U E and come back down the road anyway.
Well, I wouldn't think to go back to Cross Street. I would say take a right turn, drive down the road and turn around.
But then people would still have to go back left eventually, so they'd go down by the.
Right, but it's it's more dispersed, you know, it's not in that convoluted area. So, I mean, it's still tough, actually, further down the road, too. I see that down there, so I don't know what the answer is.
And I have to think that if you say no left turn, people ignore it.
Well, that's on them, you know, that's.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, everybody will do it.
Yeah.
Maybe we should do it properly.
It's human nature. We went through this with Come Home Farms in discussing should they make a left turn onto uh Route 12, and it was decided finally through all that conversation that it will be ignored, so it's kind of a wasted effort. Just for note on that, that aspect of it. Uh and I only have one other comment here, then we can go back to Kivitzing about it. The existing entrance to Spring Street is wide and may be confusing for patrons as a potential exit. We recommend the applicant consider narrowing up the driveway entrance to further define it as an entrance only. Uh again, McDonald's would prefer to maintain existing uh entrance. And Ty and Bond, we defer to the board. And my comment here in regards to the entrance, I've never seen anybody trying to come out of McDonald's on the entrance side of it, on the west side of it. So, the flow keeps it. So, I I, you know, as a practicality of us seeing it, that seems to be a non-starter.
Okay.
Hate to say it, Jane.
That's fine.
You're looking at plans and we see the reality of it. Okay, and those are all the comments.
If I could add, just um kind of close a circle on this. With this application being just for the drive-through piece of it, um there were many aspects of regulations that we didn't really look at because we don't, we reduced the impervious coverage on the site, so stormwater shouldn't be an issue. Um I understand maybe it has been in the past, maybe it is still. Um that may be something we need to look at a little further if that's a concern of the town.
Okay. Any other comments, Jean, or is that pretty well, the stormwater is the one you want?
I think that's it until you remind me of something else.
Okay, very good. Okay, uh board members, any more questions, comments, before I call the public?
Nope.
And we will come back to it, but uh let's start a discussion with the public. Uh if anybody would like to make comments, please come up, state your name, and speak into the microphone.
And if you don't mind, please sign in as well.
Oh, sure.
Sign-in sheet, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Tom Carrier. I live at 236 Spring Street.
You live right in this house right here. That's the house, that's the front. So, we look at this section of McDonald's. This large bush here locks the um the parking lot in this area from our view, from our comfort, from our enjoyment of of our house. So, what they've done.
I will need you to speak into the mic so the people at home can hear you.
Yes. Uh so what they've done has been working, except for um people coming into um McDonald's from uh Spring Street, and they're backing up literally into the street. Um I I firmly believe that what you guys have proposed will alleviate alleviate a lot of that issue. Um in regard to a couple of the comments, the um the sign, there is a no parking sign on McDonald's side, and it's been, actually, it's in cement. And literally last week, I tracked a trailer truck parked over there and knocked, it's laying, right now, currently is laying on the ground right where it came out of the ground. Um there's a crosswalk that's supposed to be there. Well, used to be there or supposed to be there. It was designed by. People put the sidewalk in, that that's a crosswalk side there. Crosswalk used to be over here, and now it's here, but it's not existent. So, you have signs that says it's a crosswalk. You have um but there's no crosswalk. So, if if I know everybody here's been very concerned about safety. If you really, really care about safety, you'll put a crosswalk in there, you'll put a sidewalk on the other side, and that will alleviate the people who are walking to McDonald's to go in, who want to cross the street that literally stand there for ten to fifteen minutes. I personally, my wife and I, try to get out of our driveway. It's very difficult, but not from McDonald's, not from Mr. Mike's. It's just Route 12. It's just the traffic. It's so much there. And if you take the parking spaces or the entrance to Cross Street away, then you're taking away parking spaces for campers, people with little trailers and other things that wanted.
Boats.
Boats. We see it all the time, all the time. So, I I agree with what McDonald's trying to do. Um I want to, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Uh you can't speak to the crosswalk not being put in, can you? Or that would be the town's responsibility? Hate to put you on the uh.
I I don't have an answer for that. Refer to the Director of Public Works.
Okay.
Mr.?
Selectmen do. The selectmen do.
Yes.
The selectmen basically can honor can honor a crosswalk or no parking si- signs or whatever, you know, and uh you know, if you have a complaint, uh.
We just want to see people cross the street safely.
Yeah, me too.
It's 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 absolutely ridiculous.
But uh uh roadways basically would be up to the board, and uh I'm sure the board would be glad to consider.
If I may comment, I do have the special permit um from nineteen ninety-one, October third, nineteen ninety-one, and it does state um that there will be a no parking sign on either side of Spring Street and from Spring Street down to Cross Street to the point beyond the rear entrance slash exit drive to keep free flow of traffic available. And then there will be a stop sign placed at the end of Cross Street where it joins Spring Street. Number three, that a well-lit crosswalk be marked on Spring Street allowing pedestrians access to and from the other side of Spring Street, and the erection of signs, stop for pedestrians in crosswalk, or the equivalent be placed in a manner to allow operators of clear view of the signs with ample time to take appropriate action. And that's in, that's October third, nineteen ninety-one.
Now, was that put on uh McDonald's responsibility to do that? Can you see from that?
Those were the conditions of the permit, yes.
Conditions, so.
Yep, so we'll have to revisit that.
I assume if we do approve this, that McDonald's.
Board will go back to the.
Yeah, and those were the special conditions.
Yes, well McDonald's would honor those conditions.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so really referring to the signs, and then.
The crosswalk.
And the crosswalk.
And the crosswalk.
Yep.
And that crosswalk, so that's going across, like you were saying, from.
It's it's actually.
Where it used to be.
And the brand-new sidewalks.
Yep.
That's the crosswalk entrance, there's a yellow um plate there that.
Yep.
That's supposed to designate crosswalk.
Okay.
Um but that, in in a way for people to 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 or a sidewalk or something over there uh would save a huge amount of hassle, because they all get backed up in here trying to go in there, but they're trying, they'll leave, there's not usually five cars standing out there, there's only one or two, and they sit right out there because they don't care.
And when do you think the busiest time of day is typically? Is it all the time?
Oh, you can just pick a time. If there's if there's an event coming, getting out with kids, you know, a lot of parents will go in there. If there's leaf people who are all over, I mean.
Yeah, so whenever, yeah, so, yeah.
It's busy.
Okay.
But I have no issue with McDonald's being over there. What they did, giving us green space to look at, was tremendous.
Okay, thank you.
Point well taken.
So McDonald's would have no problem with, if it was approved, those would be part of the conditions that they replace the sidewalk, uh crosswalk, and the no parking signs that were originally required in their original permit.
So, but they were required to provide a sidewalk as well?
Just the crosswalk.
A crosswalk.
Just the crosswalk going across the street.
Yes, nothing about a sidewalk.
And that would be, is that under the jurisdiction of DPW? The road, it's out, or that's DOT?
I believe it's DOT.
DOT, right.
It's a state road. I'll double check with the director just to be sure, but I believe it's state.
So I believe that would, we need to coordinate with the state on providing that work.
Without the sidewalk over there, too, you're gonna have more trucks wanting to go over there because there's no place for them to be. So, they they either park right in front of our house and.
Well, it doesn't stop, maybe. They do anyway.
But that's why that sign's over, because I literally watched the guy drive over it. He knew he was doing it, but he didn't have any place to park. He needed to get somewhat off the road.
Understood.
And the sidewalk would kind of eliminate that, because they couldn't park on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so that would be underneath the approval of DOT as well, and whether that position for that crosswalk would be approved would still be under their jurisdiction, so.
And is there, is there an existing sidewalk on that side of Spring Street?
No.
I believe so.
It used to be cross drug, Cross Street.
Yeah.
Straight across to Spring Street, but they eliminated it because apparently the telephone pole that's on the corner of their property um blocks the view of someone trying, waiting to cross the crosswalk. So, they moved it over to that new spot and never finished it. Put signs up, but that's.
So, so it almost seems like regardless of whatever the decision is today, that that's got to get put back into place the way it was supposed to happen anyway, you know? That's something that was already decided.
Absolutely.
So.
So we can reference that special permit from nineteen ninety-one, one of those conditions, number one through four, the permit that Colin had sent me.
Understood. Um think, so I'm just like thinking about it, where we can go to like DOT for this, and if they said they can't approve that crosswalk for whatever reason, um so if that was the case, then then they wouldn't be able to move forward with the side-by-side, correct? If that was a condition?
Well, I doubt very much if the DOT would say no crosswalk.
Gotcha.
Might jump through a few hoops, but uh since there is a uh crossing right there, and there was a s- uh crosswalk, I can't see you have any problem, but I know you're heading your back.
You're talking about the sidewalk, though, right? You're talking about sidewalk.
Just the crosswalk.
Just the crosswalk, okay.
That would need to be permitted with DOT, I believe. Um I'm not sure what additional.
Did Mr. Carrier say that there's an existing curb cut for a crosswalk?
Yes.
Yeah, there's that yellow.
So there probably was the intent, and I'm thinking that, I don't know, but I'm thinking that I can remember seeing it in the past, like in the nineties or whatever, and perhaps when the road was redone and repaved, they just didn't.
Patrol.
Re-line it, Spring Street?
That has been done in years. That's the next big project.
I could take a moment and call our DPW director if you wanted to ask him if we have a purview.
Would he have uh the ability to just line it? I mean, if there's a curb cut and it's ready to go and just be, you know, painted? And then in your next.
You guys mentioned.
Development grant you can put in for a sidewalk.
You guys mentioned water or drainage. Um McDonald's doesn't really contribute a whole lot of water to the area. I don't know if you've been by there on a on a bad storm and a lot of rain, there's a lot of water, right in front of my driveway, right by Mr. Mike's. Um when the water main broke um a couple of years back, um it it sort of lowered that area, because there's a drain. There's a drain right over here, just on the other side of these little trees here. There's a, there's a a drain. The water from this area here does not go there, it can't get there. It it stays a puddle.
Okay.
Uh it's it's got messed up that way.
Mr. Gold, do you have some comments?
Sa- uh highway safety and drainage and so forth is not within the purview of us, but it's with the board of selectmen and so forth. And I I do remember a couple of those things, because I was on the board at that particular time. My suggestion would be uh is to talk to the selectmen and the town manager relative to this, because obviously uh as a matter of record, uh the things that you ask uh are already in there and so forth, and I think they'll get it straightened out.
I I wasn't necessarily, it would be nice to have it all fixed, absolutely would be wonderful, but and I I'm here for McDonald's.
Yeah, that's.
And you guys happened to mention water and drainage and stuff. They they took care of a big issue that they had.
Yep.
Where the water coming over there, and it was coming literally into the road. That I I.
That's why we have public hearings. That's why we have public hearings.
Okay, very good. Do you have any other comments?
I have, I do have a comment from our DPW director. I asked him, um are you allowed to paint crosswalks in front of McDonald's, or is it DOT? And he said, no, because there's no sidewalk to connect it to. He says he's working on adding one to make that possible. And I said, a sidewalk? And he says, yes, crosswalks have to go from sidewalk to sidewalk to be legal. So, it is on his radar, he is working on it. So, I don't know how successful he's going to be, but it it is in his mind, so.
Crosswalk there would also help McDonald's, too, because people would walk over.
A crosswalk needs to lead to side, go to from sidewalk to sidewalk.
So, there there can't be a crosswalk till there's a sidewalk.
Correct.
And the DPW is.
Brian Croto, our DPW director, is working on it.
Is working on getting a sidewalk on that side.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Like I said, I don't know what the ETA is, or how successful, or if it's going to be approved, but he is aware and he he has to go from sidewalk to sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah. Very good, thank you.
Thank you guys for listening to us.
Do we have any other public comment?
Appreciate the input.
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We like everybody here and successful, um and just have it safe, so that everybody can enjoy it. Because there's a lot of people that enjoy that green space, that bring their dogs out, they 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 recreate out there while they're eating. It's just wonderful, and I want to see it go away.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh do I have any other public that would like to make comment? Uh well, not hearing any, we go back to the board. Um now, on uh before we close the hearing, waivers. What waivers are you looking for?
Uh so we requested a waiver from the parking compliance, which I believe you'd need to be within ten percent of I T E parking regs. Um so kind of that provide, it results in a minimum of twenty-one and a maximum of twenty-seven, um where they're gonna have thirty-nine out there. Um there's forty-six existing, so we're reducing it closer to compliance. But for McDonald's operational needs, they prefer just to keep the thirty-nine or um proposed parking spaces.
Okay, so waiver on the parking, any other waivers?
Um it was then it was just providing a stormwater report, just based on the reduction in impervious coverage, um just not resulting in any increase in peak stormwater flows or anything like that.
Okay. Um any comments from you, Nicole, or questions or additional information?
I do not have any at this time.
Okay, very good. Now, the board members, do you have anything that you, we won't be doing this till after we close the hearing, and whether we even make a decision tonight, we put it off till our next meeting, because we have ninety days to make a decision, and we can make requirements such as they supply parking, no parking signs, replace the no parking signs and put them at so much length, or uh if Brian Croto thinks a sidewalk is there, whether we think McDonald's should contribute to it. Those are things we can add before we uh make an approval. But for right now, we'll be just having the hearing, and we will open and close it. Now, do we have any other questions from the ZBA board members?
I'm good.
In regards to the parking and the site use.
Yes. Now, uh board members, is there anything else, or any, McDonald's, do you have any other information you'd like to give before we close the hearing? Because once we close the hearing, uh can't take any more information. The board sits and makes a decision on how they want to do it.
Nope. Um no, I think it's really about it. Again, it's really just trying to improve this existing McDonald's and kind of their drive-through operations that are out there today. So McDonald's with the drive-through, we're just really trying to make it better, so appreciate the consideration on this.
Okay, very good. Um you know, otherwise, if there's nothing else, I would look for Mr. Gold.
Uh are the concerns of the gentleman uh going to be brought to the uh prospective authorities?
Nicole, will you bring in?
With regards to. With regards to the sidewalk and the crosswalk and the parking signs?
Yeah.
I, I've brought that to the attention of Brian Crotto, the DPW director, so I will, I will stay on him with that to see how it's progressing.
And I gotta tell you, I am ready to close the hearing here, but myself, I am not ready to vote on it tonight. I would like to get some more information from Brian, 'cause we might be putting conditions on it, such as the parking signs, such as something else. We don't know at the moment, and we will be discussing it at our own next meeting, unless the board at its pleasure wants to have a vote tonight up or down on it.
Well, what information? I mean, wasn't, uh...
I wanna, uh, speak to Bri- Brian and get Brian's information.
Well...
Self.
Didn't he have something to say about it anyway?
He said that he was...
Well, this is just my opinion.
He was aware and he was working on it.
Uh, whether they wanna make a motion, they wanna approve it or disapprove it tonight. I'm just telling you what I think before I close the hearing. Okay, uh, if I have no other comments from anybody, uh, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to close the hearing. I made the motion to close the hearing. Okay, a motion from that, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and I just wanna know, we can't really take any more information after we close the hearing. Okay, any other comments before I call it? Uh, all in favor of, uh, closing the hearing, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so our hearing is closed?
We're still open.
Yes, we are.
You're still open, so you can do what you want.
Thank you. You're not gonna call the vote now?
Uh, I, I will see what you're doing. I'm not going to, uh, call a vote till you close your hearing.
Okay. So we are here to address the change in use of the, of the building. Our purview is to analyze whether or not there's been a substantial difference in the use of the property.
Correct.
And could you read again the conditions of the one from the original use, special permit?
Yep, so you want me to read the whole permit?
Would you please, if that's not too much, or I can, or...
Yep, no, absolutely.
Thank you. Just to refresh everybody's memory back twenty-some-odd years.
And you were on the board, so just so you know.
Yeah, thanks.
Says the zoning board of appeals granted a special permit from section three point two-five B of the town, town zoning bylaws on October second, nineteen ninety-one, to McDonald's Corporation, whose address is six ninety Canton Street, Westwood, Mass., on property located on Spring Street, Winchton, Mass., owned in part by Peterborough Oil Company, Inc., six sixty-five North Main Street, Leamester, Mass., Robert and Lorraine Valancourt, two fifty-five Spring Street, Winchton, Mass., and the Winchton School, Inc., one seventy-two Ash Street, Winchton, Mass., to a permit established of a family-style restaurant serving food and beverage for onsite and offsite consumption. The hearing on the special permit was held August twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-one, and October second, nineteen ninety-one, and was granted based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the applicant seeks to construct a family-style restaurant establishment serving food and beverages for onsite and offsite consumption with a drive-through booth and a corresponding onsite parking for forty-three cars. The proposed improvements are shown on a plan entitled McDonald's Scale One Inch Equals Twenty Feet, prepared by Allen H. Swanson, Inc. of Nashua, New Hampshire, dated July fourteenth, nineteen ninety-one. Number two, the site is located primarily on Spring Street, which is Route twelve, at the corner of Cross Street, directly across from Mr. Mike's mobile station. Number three, the use will enhance the neighborhood by providing an affordable family-style restaurant and remove unsightly truck turnaround. This use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw as other commercial uses coexist with the residential uses along Spring Street. Number four, the board has reviewed the report of the Winchton Police Safety Officer and is satisfied that this is an appropriate location for this use. The Board of Appeals, with all its members in attendance and voting, voted unanimously to grant the special permit as per their conditions imposed. The special permit is shown on the plan submitted. After hearing the testimony of the applicant and all of the concerned parties, it was determined that this request was in the best interest of the town and does not derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Special conditions affecting the special permit. The hours of operation shall be from six-thirty a.m. to eleven p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and six-thirty a.m. to midnight Friday and Saturday. Onsite trash shall be policed at least once a day, and all trash within one block area of the site shall be policed by applicant at least once a day. Recommendations of the traffic safety officer shall be implemented by the applicant, and all costs associated therein shall be borne by the applicant, provided approval of such recommendations is granted by the appropriate granting authorities. Said recommendations are, number one, there'll be no parking signs on either side of Spring Street, and from Spring Street down to Cross Street to the point beyond the rear entrance slash exit drive to keep the free flow of traffic available. Number two, there will be a stop sign placed at the end of Cross Street where it joins Spring Street. Number three, that a well-lit crosswalk be marked on Spring Street, allowing pedestrians to access to and from the other side of Spring Street. Number four, erection of signs, stop for pedestrians in crosswalk or equivalent, be placed in a manner to allow operators the clear view of the signs with ample time to take appropriate action. The applicant shall, after twenty days' appeal period has expired, record the notice of the special permit in the registry of deeds and file a copy of the registry receipt with the Board of Appeals within ninety days of the filing of this decision by the Board of Appeals with the town clerk. Present and voting on this manner were Norman Norcross, Luke Doyle, Cynthia Carville, Kenneth Gerard, and Richard Jamison. You are hereby advised of a twenty-day appeal period within the date of this decision is filed with the town clerk. And that was signed by Lois Abear, where she was the town clerk back then. So that was the special permit for the, uh, ZBA.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I guess my major concern right now is adhering. I think not much has changed as far as the, the findings of the board being in harmony with the neighborhood and in the, in the, in the, under the law, um, and the intent of the law and the intent of the bylaw. The buildings that were there were not as pleasant to look at as McDonald's with the, with the green space that is still there. So I think my major concern, forty-three cars to, what did you say, thirty-nine cars? We have to adjust that. Um, I think there's justification to do so, alleviate some onsite parking. Just in going by that property, I don't think I've ever seen every single parking lot used or filled. I can't remember any time.
I don't think I've ever seen it. Right.
No, I, there's always a place to park. Several open, especially along the backs, well, both sides, all sides. So I don't think alleviating seven parking spaces is going to affect the intent of the permit too much. My big concerns would be... Hours of operation, I suppose we can lower... Is it open until midnight on the weekends?
I, I know it's open at least till eleven, I believe.
Believe it's eleven.
Yeah.
All right, so, I mean, that doesn't need to change. It's not later than midnight on a weekday, and it's not twenty-four hours at, at the time as has been historically the, the intent of everybody. We're worried about the traffic lights and the, you know, the headlights coming into the neighborhood yards, especially after midnight and lights shining onto adjacent properties. Um, we made no reference to that during that, um, meeting, interestingly enough. But is there any light concerns from the neighbors? That would be something that we could address now. Obviously, there's been no complaints over the years.
Maybe it's people who realize their car lamps are going off.
Sure. I haven't noticed... One of the big concerns of the neighbors on Cross Street, if I remember right correctly, was the fact that they were worried about the trash, you know? People going through McDonald's and throwing out their cups and their, their wrappers out the window. That doesn't seem to me to be a huge problem.
No, I think they come to my road.
Oh, okay, my road.
I'd like to pick up a Wendy's.
It's not for McDonald's, it's, it's trash in general.
It's trash. I mean, being right there, literally get everything. It's, it's, they're no worse than any Cumberland Farms.
Sure.
Literally, I got more Cumberland Farms cups, I think, than I get McDonald's Coke.
So we did have in the conditions that some, someone would walk the perimeter of the property daily to...
Release the trash.
Partic- to pick up trash, so, um... That might not be a bad idea to keep in. Stop sign, no parking signs, well-lit crosswalk. It's, I think we kinda tiptoed around there, saying that if it was feasible with permitting from the authorities or something to that wording. I don't know if we can be more assertive this time around.
Yeah. I think that if it doesn't go forward, it shouldn't be because of McDonald's. You know what I mean? Like, if we can get the sidewalk in or whatever, then, then, then there should be zero resistance from McDonald's, and that, that's how I kinda see that. If we can't get them the sidewalk, then I don't know what we do with that, but it's kinda where it should go.
It should be a less, not that.
Well, I think, I don't, I don't know. I mean, what side doesn't have the sidewalk?
The side of McDonald's side, yeah.
So, yeah, but maybe, or that's the other option, is you say McDonald's should put the sidewalk in and then continue the...
But can they legally on a highway, on a state highway? That's the problem.
Yeah. Would you like me to see if I can get Brian on the phone for a conversation, perhaps? Maybe he can answer some questions?
If that's possible, yeah, why not?
Let me see, okay.
I don't know the permitting process on a state highway or that section of the highway.
Right, 'cause we can't require them to do something they can't do.
Correct.
You know?
Correct.
Hi, do you have time for a call? Can I, can I put you on speakerphone? We're in the planning board meeting, zoning board meeting, and, and we just wanna discuss, like, what the process is for getting the sidewalk...
You're on the spot.
Um, getting the sidewalk approved and what you're, how you're going about doing it, and, you know, your method and so on and so forth, and what the probability is of getting it done. So, may I put you on speaker? Okay, all right.
Hold that thought, Bert. Okay, go ahead.
So on the phone right now is Brian Crotto, our DPW director, and he's gonna talk about the sidewalk connecting the crosswalk to the other side of Spring Street. Okay, Brian, you're on.
So there's currently in entrance with a sidewalk, the Mike Mart side. It's gonna extend across to where the existing house is now, um, I forget which street that is, across from it.
Cross Street, yep.
Yeah, Cross Street, and then there'll be a short sidewalk, it'll connect, it'll connect there. Leg- legally in Massachusetts, the sidewalk has to connect, or crosswalk has to connect. Not allowed to paint a sidewalk that doesn't connect. So, hopefully with time, next year, we can install that short piece of sidewalk to connect it. There is no, there is no plan to put a sidewalk in front of McDonald's. If McDonald's wants to put a sidewalk in, we can, we can work through that, but at this time, we're just gonna make it so you can cross from Spring Street to, um, Cross Road.
Okay, so from Spring Street to Cross Street, where the sidewalk used to be, correct? Uh, where the crosswalk used to be a long time ago? Like, you have like a little yellow area, like a little... Like, okay, so the sidewalk would start there, and it would connect over across the street, so you can essentially access Cross Street. You have no plans to put a sidewalk up by the green space, um, in front of McDonald's?
Nope, if McDonald's wants to put a crosswalk in, I would, uh, wants to put a sidewalk in that portion, I would not o- object to that, and we could provide some, some oversight.
Okay, and we can maybe do it as part of the project at McDonald's expense?
Yeah, a hundred percent. I would be on board with that, a hundred percent.
Okay. All right, and that would continue it up through that green space? So if people wanted to cross the street and walk up the sidewalk to get into McDonald's parking lot, they could.
And so...
Yeah, yep, one hundred percent.
Yeah, Cindy has a question, hang on.
Hi, I'm sorry. You're proposing to put the crosswalk down so that the pedestrians would have to walk up Cross Street and enter McDonald's through the back, back parking lot? Is that what you're proposing?
So they come off of Spring Street, cross Route twelve, and then walk up Cross Street and go into the, the exit of McDonald's, Brian? Right now, correct? Because you have no current plans to put a sidewalk at the green space in front of McDonald's?
Right, so the sidewalk's not even gonna go up that far at this point? So the, the law says that you have to, you have to go from a crosswalk to a ramp and then level. So once it goes level, then they can go back on the ground, and I can legally put a crosswalk there. So we don't have the funding in place right now to carry that sidewalk all the way across. It would be a goal, but it comes down to funding.
So the ramp and the flat part would be at the corner of Cross and Spring?
So the ramp and the flat part are at the corner of Cross and Spring?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not horrible.
No. And then if McDonald's wanted to, at their expense, add it up the side where the trucks are parking and they're knocking over the sign, then they could do it at their expense.
And what about the par- no parking sign?
Yep, is it, is it possible to put that as a requirement as part of this project or no?
That, that's, that's what we're looking to find out.
That's why you're on the phone with us. Um, so, and two, there's a no parking sign that a truck has knocked over that has fallen? Can you secure that?
No good.
Yeah, that's where I would like them to put the, the sidewalk.
Yep, yep, but can you, can you erect the sign in, in the meantime? Can you put that on your list?
Yeah, some way, we can get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Stop sign at the end of Cross.
Okay, and a stop sign at the end of Cross Street?
Yeah, we have a ton of these streets that we have to rectify. Again, we, we have so much of a budget.
And that's on your list? Okay.
Yep.
All righty, thank you so very much. Anybody else have any questions for Brian while I have him on the, on the line?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Brian. Have a good night. See you tomorrow. Bye-bye.
All right. Mr. Gould, you have a question?
A yes vote here tonight doesn't change any of your requirements back in nineteen ninety-one. If you do that, you're gonna have to go back through this whole project again, have another public hearing. You know, in other words, you people made a decision in nineteen ninety-one. The plan stands, you're embodied with it.
We're here tonight to modify and approve a new plan, because it's a change in use.
Okay, uh, I don't have a problem with that. You know, I, I, I don't have a problem with that, but you can't do it without going through this same rigmarole again. You gotta have another public hearing, and you've got the...
This is the public hearing for the new special permit.
Ah?
This is the public hearing for the new special permit. Both the special permit...
Is that what, is that what the notice says, that you'll change the special permit?
It says a new s- we're here as a joint planning and, and zoning to act on the special perm- uh, special permit to change the...
To modify the site plan, variance in special permit issued to McDonald's. So we're modifying the existing permits that are in place from nineteen ninety-one.
We're here to modify the special permit as well.
Yeah, everything still holds true from nineteen ninety-one. So everything that was recorded with the Worcester Registry of Deeds is still in place. We're just adding to that permit to bring it up to the year twenty-twenty-two and would, what McDonald's is proposing to do. So we're still gonna reference this recorded plan, this recorded special permit, the recorded site plan. However, we're going to, um, expand on it, giving them, you know, new conditions and new, um, you know, stipulations as far as if this was to go through and be approved.
But if there's a change, it's not on the plan. You're, you're approving this plan now, and there gonna be some changes afterwards? Uh-uh.
No, we can make it, we could make it contingent upon McDonald's, you know, pending our funding, you know, like Brian said, he's, you know, money is an issue. Pending our funding, we could make McDonald's put a sidewalk in front of their green space. We could also ask McDonald's to put, to finish that crosswalk and to, you know, fix the corner, so you can have that crosswalk connecting to the business and things across the street. So we certainly can put conditions in place that as well still hold true for back in nineteen ninety-one, what was decided by both the planning board and the zoning board. However, this is gonna bring McDonald's to task to, if this is what they wanna do, these are the rules that they're gonna have to follow, implemented by both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. And that's what we're here tonight to do, to come up with some type of conclusion and some type of agreement to, um, you know, possibly let them go through. to, um, you know, possibly let them go through with their project with stipulations in place. And we can also give them a timeline for doing such a project, if we can kinda get a timeline when they propose to start it, and as well as revisit the special permit in a disclosed amount of time.
So, what you're saying is, if we approve this, he's gonna have to come back with another plan?
If we approve it, he can certainly submit...
He's gonna have to come back with another plan and...
Well, where, so where, we would be approving for a second drive-through lane. Can, you know, and we would say...
I'm referring basically to the, uh, to the crosswalk and the signs and so on and so forth.
Yes. And we can also...
That's not in any plan. How can you approve it, basically, when it's not on the plan?
It's not on the plan, but we can make it, we can have them provide a plan to us.
The, um, your part is the dri, the drive-through reconfiguration and the parking. Our part is addressing the use of the property, which...
Meaning adding another drive-through?
Okay.
And our conditions.
I certainly have the right to have my say.
Of course.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Of course.
Yeah, I think that sometimes we have to make decisions with contingencies, and those contingencies didn't exist before the meeting. So, once we have the meeting, we make that contingency, and then the, the applicant has to address that.
You know, and, and if you make a motion to continue this hearing, I'll vote for it.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Well, you can't vote for it because it's their hearing. We've closed our hearing.
Well, no, but the, what I'm simply saying is, say, is, you know, uh, let's listen to the people we represent. You know, there's some concerns about safety. Okay, fine. The safety, uh, plan itself was never really implemented, but there was a crosswalk there. Uh, I do remember that, and I think the, uh, the street got hardtopped over and so on and so forth. What I'm simply saying is that, uh, if you wanna continue it and ask these people to come in with all of those changes on a plan so you can see it, I agree.
Right. Well, I imagine there'd be some sort of presentation that we would be able to see it, that it would be there, but we still have to, we could still vote on that being a contingency of it.
A condition.
Yeah, a condition.
Yeah. I, and I, I hope you people will continue it, basically, because if somebody wants to take legal action on this thing, they could.
In many cases, we come up with conditions that have time limits and time constraints. And we also would vote the conditions tonight, next week, next month, whenever we vote them in. There's still a twenty-one day, twenty-day appeal period for our, for our vote. People can appeal it and, and contest what we have approved, um, if they have a...
Now, now, I would say that if, if they were going to do something, one of our contingencies, and that maybe required an additional special permit because of whatever their proposed plan is, then maybe we would, we would have to revisit that. But if it falls within whatever the, the legalities are, then we don't, I don't think we really have to, to revisit that as long as it falls within laws and, and it's legal to do.
And we often put it as a condition that they must follow all state, local, and federal rules and guidelines. So, we're not here as a, as a zoning board to tell them how to design a sidewalk. Your hearing's closed.
Yeah.
You might have the purview of how to...
We can put conditions on...
How to design a sidewalk.
Discuss.
We don't tell them how to design it. That's not under our umbrella.
And, if I may, uh, we do have Ty and Bond, too, on board that can assist with overseeing the process of putting a sidewalk in. So, we can send it back to peer review as well, you know?
And it doesn't look like it's an extensive, expensive hu, I mean, it's, it's gonna add to the expense and the cost, but it's clearly not like a mile of sidewalk.
Well, okay. If, if, if that's the case, I would agree with that, but put it on the plan. Put it, put it on the plan. You know, never mind a sidebar agreement and so forth and so on. I don't think that's gonna cut it. Put it, have the gentleman put it on the plan. Period. That's my feeling. You know, you people are a separate board. I can't tell you what to do, and I'm not gonna.
Evelyn, you have a...
Well, I, you know, I, I don't see the point of what you're looking to have happen, Bert. I don't really think that that's necessary. If we make it part of our motion, to be part, to be our motion, the planning board has yet to make the determination. They can add our decision to their plan.
Right. It's...
To your plan.
Us telling them to design a sidewalk is not...
No.
Our, that's not under our umbrella. That's not our, we talk about the use of the land and condition the use.
Right.
And I believe that would fall into the DPW director's purview as well. So, McDonald's would have to work with our DPW director, Brian, to, you know, figure out what we're doing, what they're doing, or if they wanted to just take on putting that small section of sidewalk in, just squaring off that corner, putting this, putting the crosswalk in like it was stated back in 91. I don't know if McDonald's would be amenable to that.
Am I allowed to comment on that?
Absolutely. To us, not staff. Sorry.
Yeah. So, um, just with consideration of the sidewalk, my only kind of thought on that is, is, 'cause it's gonna be, need to be approved by DOT, um, and whether, I know there's some guy wires on, like, utility poles along there and guy wires, so I'm not exactly sure to what extent, um, we'd be able to provide that, or if it could be designed accordingly, accordingly with, um, DOT, uh, like, regulations. I'm assuming that permitting take up to like eight months as well to even like, um, get a permit to do the...
So, this is the other question.
Yeah.
I mean, to your point, and I'm just looking at that nice green space. Would it be possible, Brian said he's gonna plan to put in a, a corner cement thing so that the crosswalk can legally be installed on the town's, on the town's dime?
Right.
Would it be possible to connect that cement thing to the parking lot with maybe a path, a gravel path, or something off the road, cut in maybe four or five feet off the street and just cut the bushes, have a pedestrian gravel, crushstone, something that the town doesn't have to plow 'cause it's a sidewalk, that people can just...
Yeah. Understandable. Um, I know grades are a bit steep at that driveway within that landscaping areas.
May I interrupt for one second? Brian said that's his road, not his road, but it's his road. Um, and he owns to Rivers Edge, so we own to the Rivers Edge, which is the restaurant down the street.
Okay, so it's us.
So, it's town.
So, it's not DOT.
So, it's town. So, it's not DOT.
All right, I know it's like, close the...
So, it's, it's town, yeah, all the way up to Rivers Edge, and then it starts with the town, with the DOT road.
Understood. Gotcha.
It's a, it's a town-owned, state-numbered route, is what he called it.
Gotcha.
So...
So, that was one of my ideas.
Okay. So, that alleviates that stumbling block.
Just, I mean, to mitigate until the town has money to put in a sidewalk, to keep the pedestrians safe. I mean, I don't know if it's possible to grade it.
Yeah. We'd have to look a little closer, like, at potential designs and actual feasibility to bring something like that in. And probably would wanna ask the operator on that as well.
Of course.
Question.
Just trying to throw out some ideas.
Uh, question to the gentleman here from Bowler. Uh, were you aware, uh, of anything that was done in 1991 by the Board of Appeals relative to this discussion here tonight?
Uh, the, like, previous approval?
The crosswalk?
Um, no, I was not.
You were not? Well, okay, I guess you can't blame him either, you know? I mean, hey. I mean, your board, your, your board made a decision.
Correct.
And I, I think that, I think this decision basically should be implemented. I think it should be part of this plan. Why not?
You can make it part of your plan after we determine what we wanna do. Then you people will take over and make it part, it's part of a contingency to that plan.
That's sort of what I'm saying. Just, you just come in here with, with that, with all of these things in the plan itself. That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're gonna be doing.
Well, it's gonna come, I, I think it's gonna come back to you. If we make that a contingency and they have to comply with it, they're gonna have to readjust their plan, but he, he can't do that right now, right? So, that's gonna have to come back to you, is how I see that playing out.
Well, I sup, I suppose, basically, as reasonable people, uh, if we could have a, certainly, uh, an agreement by the engineering firm that they will abide by that, I'll accept that. I would. But it wasn't really, i- it's been a good many years since the damn thing was, wasn't implemented anyway. So, let's get it done and so forth. I would like to see it part of the plan, but if, uh, if the gentleman would agree, uh, he will comply with the 1991 vote and so forth, I don't have a problem with that, and I think this would satisfy the gentleman over here.
Yeah. I just think there's a bunch of moving pieces right now, so if we can get everything to...
Put them together.
Some together properly, then we can...
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
If I may, so...
Oh, go ahead.
After you.
I was just going to, now, let's continue this, and I was going to open it up to the public to see if there's any public com, comments on the use of the property and the special permit.
Yes. 'Cause under the ZBA, you're only approving that second drive-through lane and the use of, there's gonna be a little bit more traffic as well as alleviate traffic, you know, like Mr. Carrier had said. Um, and so that's what, basically, the ZBA is approving. In your ZBA special permit, it did have listed down with the crosswalks and with the, you know, pedestrian signs and everything, but the crosswalk is not feasibly possible without, it would be illegal if we did put a crosswalk in. So, I mean, is it possible we could have them resubmit a plan? Or you could approve or disapprove on your ZBA side, and that takes you out of the picture? And then they have to submit a site plan for maybe our next planning board meeting? That's also a possibility, too, with the sidewalks and crosswalks, or at least the crosswalk, which has to lead to a sidewalk as agreed to in the 1991.
And Nicole, if you go back before the conditions, I think there was a statement in there about feasibility if possible or something, do this if possible and feasible, or I think I remember hearing that, those words, something like that. And that was kinda probably...
Recommendations of the Traffic Safety Officer shall be implemented by the applicant at, and all costs associated therein shall be borne by the applicant, provided approval of such recommendations is granted by the appropriate granting authorities. And then the recommendations were listed down.
So, that was a recommendation rather than a specific condition?
It was special condition, it was under the special conditions affecting the special permit. A was the hours of operation, B was the onsite trash, C was the recommendations of the Traffic Safety Officer with one, two, three, and four listed down.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I have, I have no problem with, I think it's great adding the second drive-through, but we, we granted a special permit in the past, and, and clearly, there's some things on there that might not be being followed by the applicant. So, I, personally, I think, I think this is something that needs to be revisited.
And held accountable for that first permit?
Right.
So, where does that leave us? Keep the same conditions as in the original permit and allow the additional use of the, use of the property to have two drive-through ra, windows instead of one? That's all, that's all we're here to talk about.
Right.
Keep the original conditions or modify the original conditions and add the drive-through?
Yep.
And what about the trap, what about the crosswalks and everything? 'Cause that's listed under your special permit as well. Yep. Yep.
What's the feeling of the board? Before we even think about that, let's, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to that? You've already said your piece. The town is fixing the corner at the town's...
Eventually, yeah.
Within a year.
It's to be determined, yeah, when that will even take place.
What is the timeline on putting, on starting construction on this project?
I believe they're looking to start, um, beginning of April of next year.
Okay.
So, we have time, so...
April and March.
I mean, we could potentially have them put on the drawing board, have them finish that corner, have them put the crosswalk signs in, the pedestrian signs, make sure the no parking signs are up, and resubmit a site plan. We'll have Gene review it from Ty and Bond, and then we'll do another, we'll do this all over again, possibly in the next meeting or two. And that way, we can have all our ducks in a row and have on the plans exactly what Mr. Gould is requesting, and as well as finish off that sidewalk to make it safe. And even though it did not have a sidewalk in the original plan, it makes sense to have one, especially where Mr. Carrier was saying that people use the green space when they're at McDonald's. And I think it'd be safer, 'cause more and more people walk these days, too. You know, make it safe to walk across McDonald's. So, um, you know, we can propose that, just make a, maybe revisit the site plans and put the crosswalks in, finish that spot off, put the no parking signs up, put the pedestrian signs up, and then we'll have another joint meeting, um, when we come to a conclusion.
I think that sounds good.
Yep.
That's my suggestion.
My hearing's closed. All we gotta decide is what conditions we wanna put on it.
Mm-hmm. And vote, affirmative or no?
Yeah. Once we decide on conditions.
Conditions.
And I'm not ready tonight for my board to make a decision one way or the other till I find out information on conditions, is, conditions. And there's no rush.
And on the flip side, I think we might be able to condition it and take a vote.
I feel...
And then throw it your way to finish.
Don't you close your hearing first and then...
I'm just, oh, yeah, but we're just, I'm just talking out loud.
It sounds like you may be able to condition it with the sidewalk and with the crosswalk, with everything that we just discussed, and vote.
And then the site plan needs to be...
The site plan needs to come back, just to make sure that it meets the standards, and then the planning board could potentially vote.
And I just wanna say that this is probably the most efficient way to do business because it is a back-and-forth thing, and it's so condit, your decision is contingent upon ours and our information drives that bus.
Right.
So, it's other, it'd be till next October.
Um, just relative to that, uh, sidewalk, um, if that was gonna be conditioned, I know, kinda looking at that corner on the plan, there is a utility pole right there. So, I'm just not sure if the actual, like, proposed work would require relocating that and kind of the costs that might incur, be, need to be incurred by McDonald's on that. Just not sure if they'd be in agreement with it. So, I think it might make sense to just take a look at potentially, uh, what DPW's looking at and coordinate with them and, um, if we could, like, request a continuance to, like, come back with, like, a better idea on what might actually be proposed out there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We can do that also.
Yeah. Okay.
So, um, I would like to entertain a vote to continue our hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Wait a minute. For how long? A month?
How long's it gonna take for you to come up with a plan? We'll, we'll talk to Brian.
Yeah. A month, a month.
We'll start an email of Brian tomorrow. Yep.
That works.
A month, one month?
Yeah.
Next month? Second, whatever it is.
So, December? And we would normally have a, um, planning board meeting, uh, on December 20th would be, uh, it would be a Tuesday evening 'cause on the 21st, well, we can have it on the 21st, December 21st, if everybody is...
Well, we don't have to do a joint meeting because we've already closed our hearing.
Okay. So, you've closed your hearing.
So, we just deal with the planning board aspect and you deal with the ZBA aspect.
So, our next...
However, don't do it joint.
We can do a joint.
It's gonna put it out another month.
No, we can't do a joint. We closed our hearing.
But we're gonna close the meeting?
We've closed our hearing.
Yeah, but when they come up with a new plan, it's still gonna have to go to you guys.
You, you need to discuss it.
We just have to discuss what conditions we're putting on it.
Right. But you might wanna know what our information is and our conditions are.
We can look in on your meeting if we do.
Okay.
So, you wanna do December 21st for ZBA?
So, you do your meeting at your date.
Okay. And shall we do the planning board meeting in January?
Uh, no. When's our next planning board meeting?
Well, our next planning board meeting is December, December 6th or December 20th? December 6th, we have the stormwater management for Doyle.
December 6th is what?
That is a Tuesday. That is a Tuesday. That's the first Tuesday.
Yeah, but I mean, what do we have on the agenda?
Just stormwater management for Doyle Ave.
Okay, so what, will we be having a meeting?
What's that?
We will be having a-
We will be having a meeting, yes, as long as Gene can get everything back to us. Yes, yes, we will be having a meeting. Yep. So will you be able to have that by the sixth of December?
Yeah, we can, we can look to provide it by then.
See, we don't need anything from him, we just have to decide what conditions we're putting on it. We could put a condition that we, that they have to build a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if they don't want to build a sidewalk, then they don't get their, uh, approval. I'm just making a whole bunch of, uh, things there, but.
No, suggestions. Um, so with your hearing being closed, is that a re-advertising of, uh, opening up of a brand-new hearing?
No.
No, okay.
We just make our conditions, and they decide on if they want to go with them or not.
Okay, so do you think December sixth, you'll be able to have something?
Yeah, yeah, I think December sixth.
Well, he doesn't need to be there for December sixth, because we cannot take any more information from him.
Okay, so.
So I'm confused.
So we, so you want some plans from him?
No.
No, you don't want plans?
We just have to discuss on December sixth, if, if we don't want to make a vote right now.
Except for what they need.
See, we can vote right now, one way or the other, or we can put it off for up to ninety days.
Can, can we sidebar that and then figure out what we're doing?
Yeah, what are we doing? Are we going to continue for the month?
For what?
For the purpose of looking at the new plan with a sidewalk, or see, and if it's feasible?
So that'd be December twenty-first.
Okay, but we, all we need to really say is that, oh, we don't know that they can.
Do we really need to continue?
Right, that's, uh, we're, we're voting on, on the extra lane and putting in the contingency of the sidewalk, and, and maybe we just say, if it's possible. So like, I mean, if, if, if there's no way that it's legally gonna happen, or if there's some obstacle that's not because of McDonald's, then, then that's just what it is, you know? I don't, I don't know that we need to continue for the, for this, because we can't control what they do with the sidewalk, unless
That's true.
it needs a variance, and then that's a different meeting.
And it doesn't, right, it wouldn't.
Doesn't.
It wouldn't. Going back, you're absolutely right. So let's take a motion to, shall we motion to close the hearing and act on the information we have already?
I, I think so.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay, so now what do we do?
We have to reschedule to December twenty-first.
Or we could vote on it tonight.
We, we can vote on the lane with the contingency of, of that sidewalk.
Conditions.
And, or we can continue.
And then how are we going to address the previous conditions of the old permit, is what I'm more, I'm concerned about.
Do we want to give them a year timeline? Brian said it was about a year. You know, possibly that they get funding.
Within the year, yes.
So revisit the sidewalk, um, concern in November of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
And so the existing special permit could possibly be approved or denied?
Right.
No, wait, the existing special permit could be modified to include a second, what do we call it, a second?
Uh, order point.
Order point, thank you.
Order point.
Yeah.
And just note that the conditions of the previous permit of nineteen ninety-one.
Remain in place.
Remain in place and need to be revisited within one year.
Mm-hmm.
I think I can do that. I'd like to make a motion to grant the special permit, the existing, modify the existing special permit to include a second order point, um, that existing permits from nineteen ninety-one, and to revisit the sidewalk, uh, November twenty twenty-three.
And revisit the sidewalk and the other special permits as, in the, in the, in the other conditions.
Revisit the sidewalk and the other special permit conditions, November twenty twenty-three.
I second that.
Okay, and?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Need a teleprompter or something.
I know, seriously.
So you're all done, so I need to speak to my board now.
I need to, now we need to close our me, uh, no, we already closed the hearing, took a vote, we're all set. Back on your court.
Now, do you want to, uh, at the pleasure of the board, does somebody want to make a motion to approve it, disapprove it, or make a decision on the conditions we're putting on at our next meeting in December sixth? What's the pleasure of the board? Or do you want to make a decision tonight? I need a little time to put in my mind together what conditions we're gonna put on this, in my own mind.
How much time?
Till our next meeting.
December sixth.
Huh?
Six o'clock.
December sixth.
I hate to go along with you, but I'm going to.
I know.
Yeah, that's maybe probably the only time.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll put this in the record books.
So if you put it on our agenda for a December sixth meeting?
I will do that.
I will have my ideas on.
Yes.
And I'll probably speak to Brian and
Okay.
the whole nine yards.
That sounds good, so it's-
Now it's all you.
Continue to December sixth.
So we're done now.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we don't need a motion.
Uh, you do not have to attend the December sixth meeting, no.
No, that's, that's our discussion, you can't give any more input.
No, we will talk about you behind your back. No, I'm just kidding. Well, I'll let you know, I'll communicate with you through email.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me. I'm making history.
Thank you for being so patient.
One team in history.
All right.
We have five.
Um, yeah. Uh, do you want to, uh, take our five minutes now, or? Uh, well, yes, actually, um, they have their, uh, Spring Street part of the hearing.
Yes, uh, they have their eleven Main, four eighteen River.
Yeah, so they will continue, and we will take a, the planning board will take a five-minute break.
Wait a minute, you need to vote on continuing your meeting.
On the continuing. I'll make a motion to continue the hearing, or continue the vote for the decision for December sixth.
Sorry, just let's keep everybody legal.
I second the motion.
It's too confusing.
Yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to continue the hearing? Uh, made it second
Thank you, Gene.
by, uh, Amanda, so we will consider our decision at the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I call a five-minute break.
Okay. All right.
For the planning board, you guys do your thing on, on Main Street.
And if the planning board wouldn't mind signing the, um, the A and R that's over on the, you gotta sign both as a Mylar copy and a regular copy. Okay, um.
Take it a five-minute break, let's continue on with Main Street, but everyone needs to come back.
He's in the ladies' room.
Okay, we'll be back. Come on back to the table, you guys, sorry.
We have to shake you to wake you up. Yes.
We still have another one after this.
No, this is the last one, and then we have the gentleman to speak on Solar.
Okay.
Okay.
And we are at, uh, nine o'clock.
We should be quick. I know, we are at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
This should be quicker. Okay, um, being as it's nine o'clock, not seven fifteen.
Yes, it is nine o'clock.
I'm gonna read the, um, notices hereby given that the zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing Wednesday, November sixteenth, at seven fifteen, to discuss the application for a variance submitted by owner Randall Hart for eleven to fifteen Main Street, also known as Assessor's Map, five D one parcel twelve, Winchand and Masso one four seven five, variance request to allow construction of a fire escape attached to a pre-existing non-conforming structure at the rear of the property within fifty feet of the rear setback requirement per section seven point two of the Winchand zoning bylaws. Said property is located at a PD Plan Development District. The hearing will be held in the second-floor auditorium, Town Hall one oh nine Front Street, Winchand and Masso one four seven five. All interested persons should plan to attend. Alternative translation and accommodation for disabled persons is available by advance request. Could I have a motion to open this?
Motion, motion open.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are here as the zoning board to approve a variance to a property that just received a, a A and R, because they moved some-
They need a fire escape, they need a fire escape to be legal.
They need a fire escape in the building to be legal. And they adjusted some property lines, and how many feet do we have?
We have twelve feet. We had an existing two feet already, and it, it becomes twelve feet. Uh, they talked to Jeff, the building commissioner, and it's an appropriate amount of space in order to build a fire escape for it to be a legal means of egress.
Okay. Anything to add?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that, uh, I, I wanted to add is, uh, that the, um, applicant had hoped to, um, have this approved relatively expeditiously. Uh, hopefully you'll be able to vote this evening, and, um, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have with respect to, um, the application.
And just, do we need to tell them that we need a unanimous vote?
What's that?
Unanimous vote, because there's four of us.
Oh, that's right. I think we said that when we first opened the meeting, that because, oh, that was the McDonald's meeting.
At McDonald's.
We are, uh, board of five generally, there are four members here this evening, and we need a unanimous vote in order for it to pass. You have the right to request a continuation if you want a full member, a full board of five.
Uh, I, I don't think that we'll need to request an extension, thank you.
Okay.
And then no recusals.
And nobody has a conflict of interest in this property, no butters, no conflicts. All righty, thank you for keeping us honest.
No, it is not, Curtis. Uh, Curtis Rich lives on twenty-five Main Street, and all it is, I will show you, Curtis.
Oh, he can come up after this, right? And then we can get yours signed in and ask questions and stuff like that. All right, awesome.
All righty. Are you, oh, perfect. All righty, do we have any questions for the applicants about the fire escape or the lines or the property lines?
Pretty straightforward.
It is pretty straightforward, and keeping it legal so that there's a me, legal means of egress.
It makes sense.
I'm sure it's been complicated to get it from point eight to this point.
It's been a, a very interesting, um, puzzle to try to solve.
I can only imagine. It doesn't make it, I mean, clearly, we have to consider when we're doing a variance, the size, shape, topography of the land isn't unique in the neighborhood, absolutely. It's, it was, it's a pre-existing non-conforming property.
Correct.
The other thing that the zoning board has to just point out in our decision is that the zoning in this district has changed multiple times in the last thirty years, back and forth. So what could have been possibly legal then is not legal now, and continues to be.
As well as, um, building code as well, you know, so.
And the building is how many years old?
Uh, at least a hundred and forty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very old, so, and the reason for them doing this is just because of that fire escape, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and that was the neighbor that I did have a side conversation with, just for the record, Curtis Rich. He lives at twenty-five Main Street, and he thought it may affect his property line, and I did explain to him, it's just taking land from four eighteen River and giving it to eleven Main, and he was perfectly fine with it, so.
And both of those properties are owned by the applicant?
Uh, both four eighteen River and eleven Main are owned by Mr. Hart.
Correct.
Yes.
Huh.
Huh, and they've always, well, and the previous owner owned both of them together, too. And I don't know about prior to that.
And the reason I'm hugging is for purposes of zoning, if you own two adjacent properties, it's one property.
Common ownership.
Mm-hmm, so it might be a moot point.
Well, if you want to sell one of them.
That's what he, that's his intent as well.
Have a moment, so the, the intent is, assuming that the variance is granted, would be to convey title to, uh, a, a different property owner, um, so that, um, the merger issue would be eliminated.
Gotcha, I think, but it gets-
So, so, yes, I, I understand your, your point. These two lots were platted separately back in the nineteenth century, and, you know, my, my-
Is one, are there two house structures on them?
There are two, there are two separate structures, two buildings.
Two separate addresses.
Two, two houses, two multifamily houses. Um, there were, at one point in time, apparently, you know, one of the gentlemen on the planning board mentioned that he actually was born in one of these buildings, which I think is kind of interesting. And at one point in time, there were some storefronts in one of the buildings.
Correct.
Uh, there was a trolley line that ran in front of one of the buildings, which actually is how I got involved in this case, because the presence of the, or the, uh, running of the street railway, I think, caused a title issue. Um, you know, if you can picture this property, if you've been by it, there's an island sitting in the middle of the street where you take a right turn. Well, that island, at one point in history, was probably within the boundary lines. The street railway cut off the main part of the lot in between the, where the traffic island is now and the main part. Um, and, um, you know, fast forward maybe a hundred years, there are some relatively funky things in the way these lots are described.
So to the point, it is size, shape, topography, uniqueness in the, in the, in the property, for all those reasons, within harmony of the neighborhood, all of those things that we normally can do, have to address to give a variance are, are doable.
Yeah, and then to your, to your point, at the end of each of these steps, the properties will be, will have separate titling. So, you know, but we, we really couldn't do that until we received the zoning relief.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I, I think this is an easy one for me, anyway.
Do you know? Any questions from my colleagues?
Nope.
It's all you, all game.
Thank you. All righty, could I entertain a motion to close the hearing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to make a motion to, uh, close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do I have a motion or any discussion?
You good? I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's proposal.
To grab the variance.
Of the variance of ten feet.
To construct the-
To construct a, a fire escape, right.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Now, she needs to have someone write up the decision, it needs to be signed by
By all members.
all of us, and, um, signed into the town clerk's office. So as soon as that's-
Probably next week at some point.
Done, it'll be next week, it's a point.
Possibly, you know, we're open only two days next week.
Well, we've got the holiday, but that's okay.
Yeah, either, either next week or the week after.
Okay.
I'll give you a call and let you know. Yeah, yeah, in the meantime, you can take your Mylar with you and record the A and R.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's all signed.
And, um, yeah, and then the twenty-day appeal period starts.
Okay.
It's thirty days for appeals, something like that.
Uh, twenty days for appeals, as soon as it's stamped in with a town clerk.
Okay.
Yep.
All righty, so thank you very much.
And he's gonna take his Mylar with him.
Free to go.
Yes.
You should have gotten McDonald's, it took so long.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We said nine thirty. We're all gonna turn into pumpkins.
I call a planning board meeting back to order at nine oh eight. Because we have one more item on the agenda.
We do have one more item, yeah.
Gentlemen that's been sitting patiently-
Patiently waiting.
That is going to give Winchand millions of dollars.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Good night, good night, good luck. All righty, so come on down front.
Yeah, might as well. Get started, introduce yourself.
Yeah, so this one's easy, we're not a public hearing, it's just during a public meeting, so a little less structured. Uh, so I'm Evan Turner, uh, I am the Solar guy, uh, for stuff you may have heard about for Solar in town. I have fourteen hundred acres under contract, uh, for purchase, and the intention to develop the majority of the campus as a solar array. The basic reason that I'm here now, there we go, the basic reason I'm here now is to make sure, like, it's a giant endeavor. It will have many years of work involved in figuring out what we can build, and why, and what we could, would, should. But the primary concept is you should, for me here tonight, is you guys shouldn't have to hear this through the grapevine of the rumor mill. I'd like you to hear about it from me, uh, before we get even towards the formal application process, uh, down the road. formal application process down the road. So that's what this is tonight. Just a heads up, a courtesy notification, time to ask me questions, what it is not, and we have to be careful that we don't cross the lines on. It's not a public hearing for approval. It's not something where I need people to express, you know, I like it, I want it, I hate it, I don't want it. That's not the point of this. Perfectly happy for you guys to say absolutely nothing if that fits your, your preferences, because I don't want to cross that line where people think, oh, this is some weird hearing where we decide a stuff ahead of time. Not the case. From a jurisdiction-wise, solar by site plan approval, or site plan review in Winchton. So I believe that's the planning board for the purview there. I don't believe you guys have a direct approval during a normal site plan process on the zoning side. And if you, you don't have any different understanding?
No, just, it's just planning board.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
So, but you guys are the people who are elected to look at zoning and planning in the town, so it makes sense why you're all here to read everyone in. Nicole, could you bring up the site picture?
Excuse me, gentlemen, if you're talking, could you take it outside?
I do not have the site pictures handy. Do you have them on the zip drive?
No, I do not.
I can go, I can run downstairs if you want to grab them if you'd like.
It may not be necessary, but it would be nice to give a picture. Let me think about that real fast. Could I plug in to a cable here?
You want here, here, you want my cable?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you have your laptop.
That would work. Can you just a second while I set this up?
Yeah, you can have my lap, you can have my cable.
Just to give you guys a picture of the sites, you may or you probably are familiar with some of the land, primarily off of North Ashburnham Road on the east side of town, up against the town line with Ashburnham proper. Just on the north, thank you, before you turn off into, like, if you're heading towards Ashburnham and you get to the scrap pick and pull yard, their North Ashburn Road is just prior to that. Let me get this all set up here.
Yeah, I saw this one, thank you.
Oh, no. Get that in just a second. Here we are. Thank you, ma'am. Hope I've got, oh, yeah, I've got it pulled up here already. Fantastic. Let's see if that pulls up. Looks like it's working. Exciting.
Oop, there we go.
It's finding something. There we are.
There we are.
So this is the primary area of the campus. What you're seeing now in orange are borders of the campus, which would remain treed. So orange represents things that have height, trees on a big site. So on the edges, you're seeing like a line that is, you know, a tree line around adjacent properties. In the middle, you're thinking those are wetlands by example, where the maps, yes, sir, where the maps show probable wetlands. So I've just gone ahead and kind of built them into the perspective size here. And in the blue, you're looking at prospective solar area, pending wetlands, et cetera. So this, as shown, would be the largest solar array in Massachusetts. So I don't want to undersell, you know, or understate, you know, the endeavor we're setting out for here. Probably connects to the transmission network, whether that's through the substation that is right here on East Winchton Sub on 140, or it builds a substation in the campus, to be determined. The utility has a lot of say over what the right way to plug this in. Say again, sir?
Station is where?
Here on, what was it?
Route 12.
Route 12, sorry. I went to 140 down here. Just still getting the roadside, the right verbiage. Still on 12 there, just east of the McDonald's, you know, by a mile or so. So it's a question of using that sub as exists and then running power into the site or building a substation in the campus. It'll be really up to the utility, which one is amazingly better if they have a preference. Otherwise, it's the same thing as other solar arrays you've seen, just bigger. Instead of doing a 25 to 50 acre site, it'll end up being a 200 to 300 acre site in the north and then, you know, 50s and hundreds in the rest of the campus. North Ashburnham Road here runs just Woods Road in the back and then eventually up next to Sunset Lake here before petering out in the back. Largely used as logging. The site up here was logged this last year, in this last season. The rest of the campus logged mostly within the last two and three years total. Taken about 40% of the trees out when they did a sustainable harvest. The property owner is selling the land in the next two years. There are Real Estate Investment Trust who has statutory times, you know, they hold the land for 15 years and then they sell it. That's how their investors work. So that time period is coming up here in 2025, so they are selling the land and I have the contract to buy it and to develop the solar. As a general industry shift, I think you will see, and this is one of the earliest ones because intentionally I've built it this way, the industry is going to shift less from the 5 and 10 and 25 acre jobs you've seen a lot of in Winchton over to this size kind of work. Maybe not all this big. This is exceptionally large for anywhere. But you'll have less of the small stuff, more of the big coordinated multi-array stuff. Electrically, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to keep putting them anywhere, everywhere, when the power lines are now full of the solar capacity the street lines can hold. So once those fill up, it doesn't really matter if you've got 50 acres, you know, next to a power line when it can't take any more solar. The industry we've had in Massachusetts so far explicitly built to use those local wooden pole power lines. But once they're full, it doesn't make a lot of sense to like build a fourth power line to run down Route 12 through Winchton, you know, for six miles to get to the other side of town. That doesn't make economic sense. So it'll be bigger, more coordinated stuff like this, just as a market sentiment. You're itching for a question, sir?
You own the land already?
No, not yet. Exclusive right to purchase, still owned by Conservation Forest.
Do you abut, do you abut any town property?
Yes, we do.
The cemetery?
No, not that one.
Okay.
I abut property that is now the state-owned property that I believe the town gifted to the cemetery, the veteran cemetery, not the town cemetery.
Okay, you abut that?
Yes. So the area here, I'll zoom in. There we go.
It's an address that we're using to reference.
This would all be zero North Ashburnham Road. None of it has.
Is there a map and parcel that you can kind of give us to?
Yes. Let me jump over to this one. I'm in Wareham right now, but give me a second and I'll zoom over.
Yeah, just like a map and parcel, just so we can get our bearings about us for.
Yes, ma'am. Here we are. So here's that same campus area. Here's the big one up north. There's that big piece that we just looked at in the very north.
That's the back of the lake.
Mm-hmm. The lake and here Sunset Lake here and then the backside of Monamonic over here. So it's tucked in. The land sits between some large conserve pieces, I think, maybe somewhat to your point. But touching-wise, so here's the veteran cemetery on this, this site.
Yeah.
And that's a pretty sprawling, but it's got a couple other parcels, you know, that.
But you do abut it?
Yeah, the greater wildlife management area, that's what I abut. The cemetery property, you mean the town cemetery or the veteran cemetery?
The veteran cemetery.
So, yeah, the greater campus of that, yes.
Yeah.
Not like, but it's still like 3,000 feet away from the cemetery property.
How about, how about the three ponds up there, Lake Sal, Lake Martin?
Right around them. Sal is down in the bottom left-hand side.
Gotcha. Yeah, so, yes, one of the parcels under contract, you know, so you have three ponds. Lake Martin, yes, and there's a little corner. This one's on site control. And then this one as well, between, you know, with the other ponds here. And then the other pond is firmly in the wildlife management area. So if that flips back over to this, to give you an example, here's that Lake Martin right there. So it is adjacent. This area is much more difficult to use relative to the rest of the campus.
How much town property is involved?
Right now, zero. Right now, zero. This is all private property. I will tell you that I've, you know, the discussion I had on Monday with the select board, you know, I will make a proposal to the town that there are some private prop, or town-owned pieces that would be beneficial for this campus to be able to lease for, basically for running electrical lines. Easier to run power, for instance, from a substation here and then run down this public way that's in the back, Paper Road, the water main stuff runs down it right now, than it is to go down 12 and add a bunch of power lines to that. Things like that, but that's a select board discussion. And of course, the town is under no obligation to do any of that. It's just, if it's in their interest, I think they'll consider.
Does the town water line involve there?
So the, the existing water line runs down this back Woods Road. That's just, I mean, it's like a Jeep trail. It's not drivable with a regular vehicle.
It's not, it's not in your, it's not in your plan?
What is not on my plan?
The water line.
I know where it is, but it's not part of my development.
Okay.
But I think, one, one thing I've talked about briefly with the town manager, select board, and briefly with the DPW gentleman, was only, what does that look like if we're, you know, upgrading this road, which the water main comes down, North Ashburnham? And I think the plan right now is to continue that down to the main road here, then come back into town instead of using this backways.
North Ashburnham Road?
Mm-hmm. That's the backbone of this campus is that public way.
Beal's property?
That's, most of this is old Beal's land.
Yeah.
Yeah, purchased, I think, back in the, the 2000s into Winchton Forest.
So this is all, yeah, Winchton Forest LLC, all this land is owned by?
Yes, ma'am. Anything that comes up is that in this area. They have other land in town. Not all of it is under contract.
How about the Commonwealth of Mass land?
Not me. That's, yeah, that's just the state.
So just Winchton Forest.
Under contract with you or your firm?
Me. Me, I am the firm.
Okay.
So I am a one, one-man show. I, there will be a heavyweight solar owner-operator that I partner with on this.
You're Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I am, as a business, I put together solar portfolios. And what I have found is that I don't, I mean, I'm a developer. I can take something from zero all the way to construction. That's a normal development cycle. What I don't like in Massachusetts is there's a flipping mechanism in solar that happens so much. You know, one person signs it up, the next person develops it, the next person develops it a little more, someone takes it into construction, then someone buys it at the end, and it's just flip, 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 flip. Not ideal. Promises that you make get lost even if they're remembered on purpose or even if they're written down. And the ones that you don't write down, God help you, they're never going to get remembered. So what I've done on campus, on partnerships is I find a partner that is the owner-operator permanently. And you'll find this industry is consolidating out of six different middle people to do it. I find a long-term owner-operator who wants to work with me to develop the campus and they're inheriting and owning it. So I've done that for about five years now, for the last three and a half. Up to the end, middle of the last year, I worked with Amp Energy and I built them a whole Massachusetts portfolio of about 120 megawatts, which is about half of this campus in aggregate. But of the stuff you're used to seeing, a little bit here, a little bit there, big areas in Chutes Berry, we did a Wilbraham, Warren, Brookfield, couple in Cape Cod, but the same distribution network, 25 to 50 acres. And then since I've, the middle of last year, I've been putting together campuses like this. So there will be a heavyweight partner. For your guys' just schedule and timing, I'm still a year or more at least out from permits, applications, not even, you know, the finished product. I've got to do wetlands and Concom. I've got to, you know, delineate everything. I've got to do the electrical work. That'll take two to three years. But I just don't want you guys to hear about this for years in the background, not having seen my face and heard the spiel and have time to ask questions and give input. One of the big things I'm working, hopefully with the town administrator and the select board, is how this needs to fit into Winchton. You as the planning board and under zoning have specific things you can ask for in your bylaws that are meant to be congruent with state law and all the appropriate regulations that things like the select board may not have. Just by example, if I want to use this little piece of land right here to help the electrical stuff be orchestrated, the town can ask for whatever it wants for that kind of lease of its own land. It's not obligated to do anything. So there are different rules when I'm talking to different folks for what the right balance is. But part of me starting here now, two years ahead of some permits, is to try to get the right input from all the people to shape the project correctly, hopefully with the town engaged to some extent. Because this will be a big one and it needs to be done right. I'd like to think, I mean, this will be the first of many in Mass at this scale, maybe not all this big, but this utility scale work. And I'd like to set a very high bar for people coming after, because there will be others. There have to be, to hit our power goals.
Is any of this project in Ashburnham?
A little bit theoretically. The town line is right here. So this parcel and these areas are there. And then, you know, anything else. So that's a maybe. Like, I've got to cross the river here to get over there with power if you bring power from this side of the campus. But then the access physically is pretty straightforward back there. A couple wetland crossings with an Ashburnham, but nothing crazy. It's just a question. This one, if I was thinking like which areas don't end up being solar that you trade, I'd say these areas probably are harder to develop, hillier, wadi-er, you know, more water around conserved land. And this area is harder for me to get to. Part of the concept I'm working on with the town proper, I like, and I've done this on some other solar projects, not this scale, but the principle it holds, I like to be able to conserve land when I do the solar. So if I get the solar rights, of course, by permit and I would keep those, there is a structure where I would donate the land to Winchton theoretically for conservation. And usually you only use about half the total acreage for solar. It's tough to get above that. Wetlands, terrain, setbacks, et cetera, lower your used acreage versus the entire thing. So if I were ballparking what I think we'll look at in two and a half years, I think I'll have on this part of the campus 700 out of 1,400 acres used. And the rest would be wetlands and upland and conservation stuff, and that's a decent balance. But that would be, of course, the town doesn't have to take the land. It could be any group that can do conservation work. But I just think that's, when you're going to do this big of a footprint, often nice to balance that a little bit. And in theory, you know, when the solar comes out of the ground in however many decades, well, it's already conserved and now you just have a big conserved piece of land. This one works pretty well for that thematically because it's between the large conservation area up here in northwest Ashburnham and then the conservation area that fits around the cemetery. So it does connect some other pieces that otherwise are broken up by private property. Otherwise, the whole thing's forested, you know, occasional, I'm sure recreational use and the casual trespassing territory, but nothing that, you know, anyone begrudges too hard. And I think you'll hear about me over the next couple of years. I would certainly love your input to the extent that you guys can give it, you know, without crossing any, you know, appropriate jurisdictional ethical boundaries. Because, I mean, your input is important as the representative of the community. But there's no crazy rush on that, so take all the time you want. Feel free to ask questions now or in the future. And what I'm doing with the select board is funneling everything through the town manager. So there's a consistent point of contact with a record of all the transaction, not transactions, transcripts going back and forth. So everyone can, you know, keep everything appropriately above board for the public engagement. Mini rant complete.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, the campus is still fluid as I take it here.
It's still what, sir?
Fluid. You will be adding, subtracting.
Exactly, yeah.
Because I see one piece in Ashburnham here and your last presentation wasn't there.
Mm-hmm. And that's, yeah, this is, I probably just didn't have it on that map because I'm not sure if we're even going to be able to use it. You know, if it's across that river, can I get to it? So fluid is the right term. Yes, sir.
And that's out on Sherbet Road, right?
I don't remember the name of this road, but that's, the frontage is back here on the way to the lake.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't see any way I'm ever going to cross that river except maybe with one giant power line that, you know, spans the whole setback. You know, 200 feet on each side of the river is a 400, functionally a 450-foot span. Ooh, that one will be fun. But, you know, because I need to stay out of the jurisdiction, it's not really worth hitting the wetland or the river for anything. Any other questions? I think I heard something from, someone else had a voice. Otherwise, I think we're all ready to get out of here.
Absolutely.
Maybe if I wasn't so late I'd have questions, but I'm kind of tired.
And if we have two years.
Yeah, seriously. Like, just, I want you guys to be aware of it. It's not, there's no tasking. Just, you know, hey, heads up. This is, you know, in the works.
No, I certainly appreciate doing that and it's good to know if something's coming and said it would be a surprise. We can kind of digest it and think about it and, you know, come up with questions. So I appreciate that for sure.
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think the easiest way, talk to Justin, town manager, you'll get any questions and he'll get them to me and then I'll be able to make sure everything, like, everyone will get the transcripts. So people who have questions can see them. Maybe a lot of the questions are repetitive because they're the right questions.
Right.
But then I can, you know, make sure everyone, you know, can get all the right questions and all the right answers already given. Awesome.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for guys having me up. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Somebody's got to adjourn the meeting. Joint motions to adjourn both meetings.
I'll make a motion on the planning board side.
Second.
Okay, Garrett. Oh, wait a minute. You're going to make a motion on the zoning board side?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay, make two motions?
I second it.
All right. I'll make a motion to, to close the hearing.
Second.
Close the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well done.
Concurrently done. A motion from Rob and a second from Brandon.
Yep.
We're all in favor.